Okay.
Yeah.
It's my being with her head in the hog.
Oh, it looks like something else there for me.
Yeah.
I just think it makes.
I didn't turn.
I didn't.
Hey, Tom.
I see.
You have to see it.
It goes all over the floor.
Yeah.
What are you made of? How's it going? Good, good. Hi.
Good. I want to take a shot. I got a leg bone. Are you good?
Hello. Good. How are you doing? Good, good. Hi.
Good. I want to take a shot. I got a leg bone. Are you good?
Hello. I'm getting tired. I'm getting tired. It looks like I'm on the floor. Yeah. Yeah. It's good.
Okay.
Okay, Joe, so you're just gonna want to be able to see the there, and then you can advance. I'm just gonna. If you don't have any fun videos or anything. Test it? Yeah, go ahead and test it.
I just can't.
Yeah, it should just work when you click.
Huh. I see the.
Yeah, it should just go to the next one, shouldn't it? That's weird.
Huh.
Did you have to right-click and do the next thing?
Yeah.
I suppose if we get desperate, that's what we'll have to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what I'll do is go back.
Yep.
So let's see if I can go back. Previous, yeah.
There we go.
That's all right. I can.
It'll work, man.
Just waiting. Go with it. What? What did you say? What did you say?
Be a little bit. Be a little bit. Yeah. Oh.
You look great. Yeah. Yeah.
Be a little bit.
Yeah.
Be a little bit. Oh.
You look great. Yeah.
Good evening.
I'm Mark Bennett. I'm vice chair for the New Kent Planning Commission. I am calling the December 20th, 2021 regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If you would, please rise. Please remember our U.S. military and first responders, past and present, who willingly put themselves between us in harm's way, whereas they are truly our American heroes. Please remain standing as we make our pledge and follow along as I say. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Adams, can you call a roll, please?
Yes, Vice Chairman. Ms. Townsend. Ms. Butler.
Here.
Mr. Moyer.
Here.
Ms. Pearson.
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Mr. LaRacheau.
Here.
Dr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Rose. Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, we'll turn to looking at our minutes and give you a moment to quickly review that, and I will entertain any motion.
Mr. Chair, have a few editorial changes?
Yes, Commissioner Davis.
On page two, bottom paragraph, sentence four, I believe Atlantic should be capitalized, Mid-Atlantic region. Also, page seven, under B, second paragraph, I believe it should say additional instead of addition. And page eight, third paragraph, I believe it should say re-advertise versus advertising. And then same page, ninth paragraph, I believe it should say to know if they could manage, add the word if. And then finally, no, let's see, page nine, Mr. Bennett asked, it was under number 12, fourth paragraph, should be asked, past tense. And then finally, under 13 on page nine, second paragraph, capitalize run, shooter run road. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Adams, please call a roll.
Yes, to approve the November 15 minutes with the noted corrections by Mr. Davis, how say you? Mr. Moyer.
Aye.
Mr. LaRacheau.
Abstain.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt.
Aye.
Mr. Tiller.
Abstain.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Pearson.
Abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Now, I open the sentence comment period is, this time period is open to anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on any item that is not before a public hearing before us tonight. They should have signed up at the foyer, and we have. Ah.
That's planned.
Mr. Richard Cottney, if you would, please. If you would, please give your address.
Six zero one one Lakeside Drive, Quentin, Virginia. Richard Cottney, on behalf of Woodhaven Property Owners Association and as a resident. First of all, I'd like to say good evening to the Planning Commission, the commissioners, the staff, and Mr. Tiller. I appreciate the resolution that I received from my tenure. It was greatly appreciated and humbled. I come to you tonight to bring to your attention a concern of the residents and the board of Woodhaven Shores. Woodhaven Property Owners Association is a private community developed in 1960 with an earthen dam 800 feet in length with an emergency spillway and box riser as the primary to create Kent Lake, a 155-acre impoundment that was from the combination of Towink Creek, Allen's Run, and Airport Creek. And all the watershed that feeds Lake is over eight square, or nine square miles. Up until around 2000, the dam had to weather many a storm by using a bottom drain, the primary box riser, and emergency spillway to control the lake level. It was a convenient way, as it took approximately six hours for water to filter through the surrounding watershed, which gave us time to implement level controls. Since that time, we have seen the time dwindle to approximately four hours due to upstream development, with higher rates of flow making it more difficult to control the lake level. The loss of woodlands and soils that absorb rainfall cause high rates of volume and flow into the lake. Our biggest concerns are the developments outside of the subdivision that directly affect the amount of runoff that ultimately end up in the lake causing rapid rise in lake levels that the new spillway may not be able to handle and could impact the evacuation route, which is Route 60. Woodhaven is not well financially supported as perhaps the farms of New Kent, Brickshire, or any of the new subdivisions that have homeowners' associations. Heavy rainfalls recently have overtopped the causeway at Towink Creek and Allen's Run due to the increased volume and flow. This has ultimately led to major repairs to level controls at the subdivision's expense. The dam is considered a high hazard by the state of Virginia due to its proximity to Route 60, which is an evacuation route, and its storage capacity, and therefore has to meet very strict critical criteria to receive an operational and maintenance permit. We stay in constant contact with the New Kent County Sheriff's Office, the county's fire and rescue, and various emergency management coordinators during heavy rain events per our EAP requirements, which is the Emergency Action Plan. We have been able to operate with a conditional permit up until this point. We have spent tens of thousands of dollars on engineering to be able to come up with a design that is acceptable to the state. The current approved design basically doubles the width of the emergency spillway to meet the requirements set forth by the state. The estimated cost is approximately $650,000. The subdivision currently does not have the financial means to move forward as loans and grants have not been available for construction. We continue to seek any form of funding to assist with the proposed project. I respectfully ask that the Planning Commission and planning to look into developing remedies to assist with any impact a planned development in and around the watershed of Lake Kent Lake would have when making their final decisions on developments. Woodhaven has supplied the county the inundation study that should be added to the comprehensive plan, and there should be some realistic consideration of how and where stormwater runoff eventually ends up. Woodhaven should not have to bear the financial burden of increased runoff created by new developments. I thank you for your time and am willing to answer any question that you have to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cottney. Would there be anybody else from the floor that'd like to address this commission at this time? Seeing nobody, I will close the consistent comment period, and we will now go into presentations. And I see that we have three presentations scheduled for tonight, and the first one is Mr. Joe Lurch from the Virginia Association of Counties, if I've got that right?
You did. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Just a little bit about the Virginia Association of Counties. If you're not familiar with us, we're the nonprofit association of Virginia counties working in the state capital on behalf of all our members. We have three major prongs. We do a lot of policy lobbying work at the state level, a little bit of federal. We do education and outreach, and then also business development. The topic that I was asked to address tonight, utility-scale solar, I thought I'd just give a little background before I go into slides, and I only have about nine slides besides this one, so I want to run through those rather quickly to get to any questions that you might have. You know, when I say utility-scale solar, I'm typically talking things greater than five megawatts in size, although I think you can get some things that are two to three megawatts and take up a large area of land, you could think of that as utility-scale solar. To give you an idea of where Virginia is compared to, say, five years ago, when I took the position here with VACO, at that time, you had your first really big utility-scale solar, which was 80 megawatts on the eastern shore in Acuama County. Since that time, and this is just looking at what I call the wholesale grid, there's a thing called PJM, which is the regional transmission organization, which tracks all these interconnection requests. We've had 3,600 or 3,600 megawatts of utility-scale solar either built in service or under engineering and procurement, so we've got that right now. Currently, in what they call the PJMQ, there's an additional 36,000 megawatts that are being applied for in Virginia. Now, a couple of notes there, and you all, I know you have one 20-megawatt facility in service, so you're probably aware of the relation of one megawatt, how many acres does that take? Typically takes about 10 acres of land, so you can kind of do the math, and you start to realize 36,000 megawatts is a lot of land in Virginia. Now, not all of that will be built, some of that is speculative at best, but it gives you an idea of where Virginia's going. So with that, I'll go ahead and just, there we go. What I thought I'd do is just touch on a couple of areas of law and regulation, taxation, and then kind of get to one slide on land use to start the Q and A. The host side agreement law, this was something that came in a couple sessions ago by the General Assembly to give localities kind of more authority on where these things are cited and how they're addressed, and also addressing kind of revenue impacts. I know you all are familiar with proffers. If you think of proffers, this is kind of like proffers on steroids in a way, because it's kind of an open negotiation with any solar developer on what they'd be willing to provide the county for ameliorating any impacts, and that can be for land use, it could be, you know, roads. You could have a lot of trucks bringing in heavy equipment to get this in place, and that may hurt your roads, and you may want to have that looked at. So essentially, what this applies to is anything greater than five megawatts in generation capacity or storage capacity, now we're talking batteries, it requires the applicant to seek a host side agreement with the locality. Now, as a part of that, locality can negotiate various things as a part of that agreement, including mitigation of any of the impacts, financial compensation to the locality is either part of your fiscal budget, your capital budget, or your fund balance, and then also assistance by the applicant in the deployment of broadband. And this is kind of an interesting nexus, because as the grid, electric grid gets hardened, there's going to be fiber optics running throughout it, and so, you know, the idea is if you're going to be having utility-scale solar, there is going to be some fiber optic eventually getting to it. There could be dark fiber that could be provided as kind of a highway for the internet as a part of that. Go on to the next slide. Few things just to kind of know about this, and this is all in the law, which I referenced. If an agreement is reached between the locality and the developer, and then you hold a public hearing, and then subsequent to public hearing, the board of supervisors could make a decision to enter into the agreement. If you have an approved agreement, it's deemed to be in compliance with your comprehensive plan, which is your 2232 review, so that is a kind of a wrinkle in the law. And then probably the last bullet, which is most important here to think about, is failure to reach an agreement doesn't mean you could not deny an application, but in doing so, that can't be the sole reason, just the failure to reach agreement, you have to have some other reasons for doing so. Go on to the next slide. Wanted to start to go into kind of the tax section here a little bit. I understand currently in, you know, New Kent County, you have the machinery and tools tax, which you use for the solar equipment. There is a thing, and I didn't put it in the slide, but in state law, solar equipment greater than five megawatts and up to 20 megawatts, or sorry, I apologize, anything five megawatts or less gets 100% exemption from your M and T. Anything greater than five megawatts, up to just under 150 megawatts, gets a mandatory 80% exemption from your M and T, which step downs to 60% mandatory exemption after a few years and then moving forward. So the General Assembly a couple years ago provided an option for localities, rather than relying particularly on M and T, if they wanted to, they could pass an ordinance, which would give 100% exemption from M and T, and you would do what's known as a revenue share. I kind of call it an energy tax, because that's essentially what it is. And it basically says for any projects, and it now includes battery storage, you could do this as well, greater than five megawatts, it would be a tax of up to $1,400 per megawatt per year for in the installed project. Now, the General Assembly in this past session in 2021, they went ahead and allowed localities to increase that by up to 10%, starting every five years in July 1st, 2026, and you can see how that breaks down looking at future years. And the whole concept behind this was $1,400 per megawatt in today's dollars loses value over time, so it's just kind of an escalation factor. Another thing I wanted to update you on from the regulatory standpoint, and I don't know if the 20-megawatt facility that was permitted here went through what's known as the DEQ Permit by Rule Process, but this was put in law in 2009 and is, really didn't get used until 2016, and now is used consistently by developers. And what this does is it allows a developer, rather than go through the State Corporation Commission to get approval, they can go to DEQ, submit a whole bunch of documentation showing, you know, how they address impacts to wildlife, to natural resources, to historic resources, and all that have to do is make sure that all these things are addressed, and they'll get a letter by DEQ saying you're good to go, and that kind of bypasses the State Corporation Commission process. As you can imagine, with all the solar development coming in in Virginia, this is overloaded DEQ, which has one person handling all these permits, and this is only part of their job. And so they looked at updating the solar regs under the PBR, and really, it was done to get higher fees so that they could, you know, build up the capacity to review these and to protect the resources. But one thing that I think is really interesting that's in the proposed regs, and we expect them to come out any day, they've been delayed for some reason, I don't know if it's come from the governor's office or not, because that's the final stamp of approval, but it includes new measures to avoid or mitigate wildlife impacts to certain forest ecological cores, and this is in the Virginia Natural Landscape Assessment. However, there's kind of a 12-month lag, in other words, the day these become effective for 12 months, those extra protections don't take effect. So some concerns that have been raised by some is that this might lead to kind of a rush on the bank, that developers may want to go ahead if they know they're going to be potentially impacting one of these core areas, they'd want to get those applications in. Somewhat conversely, I mean, in some of the comments I've seen online, people that own property in these areas feel some of their property rights are being lost by some of this, that's just a concern that I've seen raised. What this, oh shoot, I don't know how this keeps doing it. That's all right. I think I hit the scroll button and it goes back on me. So I thought it'd be good to kind of show visually, okay, this is what, the C1 and C2, the C1 is in red and orange is C2, of course, this is a big map, so what does that mean for New Kent County? And I was able to drill down on this next slide, and you can roughly see in the center is the county, and I know you all recognize the shape, and you can see in the red and the orange areas, you've got quite a bit of C1 and C2, so that's just something to consider if these PBR regs get implemented. I do know from hearing from some of the solar developers' concerns, not only about this, but also the increase in fees, some of them have just said, well, maybe we'll just go back through the State Corporation Commission to get our approvals, so I don't know how all this impacts, so that's kind of an interesting wrinkle with that. The last couple of slides are that I'll touch on before I get to kind of the last side of land use considerations. You know, a lot of questions we get from counties are, well, should we do revenue share or should we stick with M and T? The one thing you can say about revenue share is you know exactly how much you're going to get every year, because it's written into state code, $1,400 per megawatt with the escalator. It's a little more tricky on the machinery and tool tax, because there's a lot of factors that go into that, which is, you know, what is the original cost of construction, you know, per megawatt that you, you know, value it? You have a depreciation schedule, which can be changed by the SEC, which recently was changed more in favor of localities. There's assessment to sales ratio, which changes every year for a locality for public utility property, and it's all based on your real estate rate. So I provided to your planning director, Kelly, kind of the background information for four different scenarios, but I thought I'd just highlight two here, and this is, if you had a 50-megawatt facility going in in New Kent County and over 35 years, with your first year of service being in 2023, over the life there of 35 years, this is kind of the breakdown that you would see, with the caveat, you know, there are things in there that you're just kind of projecting, so that's the way it looked to me on that. What's interesting is, going to the next slide, is when you look at 150 megawatts or greater, because as I mentioned earlier, anything less than 150 megawatts gets the mandatory exemption from state, or state mandatory exemption from local property tax or M and T, that comes off the board at 150 megawatts or greater. So when you, when you look at that, you can see that the machinery and tool tax comes out predominantly better than the revenue share. The reason I mention this is for two reasons. One is you may think, well, will we ever see a 150-megawatt facility? You very may well. I know that there's a 300 and I want to say 20-megawatt facility being proposed in Pulaski County, and if you think of the geography there, how are they, are they able to do that? There's also an 800-megawatt facility being considered in Charlotte County. that you, you know, value it? You have a depreciation schedule, which can be changed by the SEC, which recently was changed more in favor of localities. There's assessment to sales ratio, which changes every year for a locality for public utility property. And it's all based on your real estate rate. So I provided to your planning director, Kelly, kind of the background information for four different scenarios, but I thought I'd just highlight two here. And this is if you had a 50-megawatt facility going in in New Kent County, and over 35 years, with your first year of service being in 2023, over the life there of 35 years, this is kind of the breakdown that you would see. With the caveat, you know, there are things in there that you're just kind of projecting. So that's the way it looked to me on that. What's interesting is, going to the next slide, is when you look at 150 megawatts or greater, because as I mentioned earlier, anything less than 150 megawatts gets the mandatory exemption from state, or state mandatory exemption from local property tax or M and T. That comes off the board at 150 megawatts or greater. So when you look at that, you can see that the machinery and tool tax comes out predominantly better than the revenue share. The reason I mention this is for two reasons. One is you may think, well, will we ever see a 150-megawatt facility? You very may well. I know that there's a 300, and I want to say 20-megawatt facility being proposed in Pulaski County. And if you think of the geography there, how are they able to do that? There's also an 800-megawatt facility being considered in Charlotte County. The other point here is that if you adopt a revenue share, that applies to all projects greater than five megawatts, regardless of whether it's 150 megawatts or above. So you couldn't break it out and say, well, we're just going to do M and T for 150 megawatts or above. So I just wanted to touch on those. And then I'm going to do, I think, one last slide here, if I can get this. There we go. Just kind of some of the land use considerations, particularly that the Planning Commission will deal with. Obviously, you want to consider the compatibility with agriculture and forestry. Decommissioning and returning land to pre-existing conditions is obviously a big issue to consider over the life of these projects. One thing that we have been hearing from many of our members is concerns about what happens to all this glass and steel when the life of the project is done, where does it go? Will it end up in our landfills, which is definitely a concern? We've actually put in a legislative request to have Department of Mines Minerals and Energy, which is now called Virginia Energy, change its name, to work with DEQ in assessing kind of the lifecycle costs of all these materials and where they'll end up. Because we think that's an important issue that Virginia should consider, and not just for the solar panels, but also for the batteries, which are a whole different animal altogether. Erosion sediment control and stormwater runoff, particularly now that we're seeing some of these bigger projects. You know, I mentioned earlier about 3,600 megawatts that have been built. When you look at the 36,000 megawatts that are kind of in the planning pipeline, their average size is double the average size that is what had been built previously. And when you start to disturb that much land, obviously, you're going to have an impact on stormwater and erosion sediment control. You know, kind of a good practice, and I've seen this done in Spotsylvania County that has a 500-megawatt facility, is that when they approved that with its special use permit, they made sure that the developer could not disturb, I think, more than 100 acres of land at a time to stabilize that, so that they weren't just kind of clear-cutting and doing it all at once. Another thing to consider, new transmission lines. You know, we're going to build all this capacity for new generation and storage. It's going to need new transmission lines. And you're starting to see that in some of the planning efforts. I just included this one section of code as maybe an entryway for the Planning Commission and the board to have a discussion with Dominion Energy, which is you can request from your incumbent utility, which in this case is Dominion, where are your 150 kilovolt lines that you're planning and your capacity is? And it could be a discussion with the incumbent utilities. Where do you see it making sense and capacity in the grid coming through our jurisdiction for siding of these facilities? It's kind of an interesting side note, and I'll end on this. You know, it's such a big land use, and localities have kind of been kind of left to their own devices to essentially plan the energy future of Virginia when you're switching to all this solar and wind. And it was from somebody that works for Virginia Farm Bureau, made a really good point to me one time we were discussing this. It said, you know, for a lot of farmers that lease farmland, and, you know, they're planting their next year's crops, and they're buying all their inputs, their seeds, their gas, their fertilizer. You know, they know the land where they're leasing is in relation to growth centers. You know, is it near an urban area? You know, is it planned to be growth? They have no idea where these things can be sited. And it's really kind of turning things upside down, I think, amongst the agricultural community. I mentioned that 800-megawatt facility in, you know, Charlotte County. I mean, that's a huge facility going in a very rural area, and nobody kind of foresaw that. So that's just something to consider. So with that, I can take any questions that you might have, and learn from you all what's going on here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dorridge. Any questions from the commissioners? The numbers that you had for the tax, M and T tax. Whose M and T tax rate did you figure for that?
I did, your old M and T tax rate. And I think I got it right, I used the Weldon Cooper 2018. Kelly, I sent you all that information, and I don't know if you've updated it since then.
We have, because we lowered it from, what, $3 to $75. Is that right, Rodney? So that's the reason I was asking, because that 44 million sounds like an awful lot of money.
Well, now, the 44 million, and now here's another quirk in the law. Anything greater than 25 megawatts in size, you apply your real estate and not your M and T rate. And that's just a quirk in the law, and it goes back several years in the General Assembly. So regardless of the generation type, if you're greater than 25 megawatts, whether you're nuclear, coal, biomass, you know, wind, whatever, you apply your real estate rate and not your M and T rate. So I did a scenario, I think, in some of the backgrounds to Kelly for a 20-megawatt facility, and it came out roughly even for... Yeah. Well, it's, yeah, I'd have to take a look at some of the information I gave Kelly. But you have a statutory M and T rate, but then you have your effective rate. And it actually decreases over time, is what I saw. Yeah.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Dorridge, that was very timely of you to be here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Our next presentation is from Reverend Hall.
All right. Figure this thing out.
Shaking around a little bit, see, there you go. See, you might need to do what Joel had to do.
I'm just right-clicking next or something.
Yeah, try clicking on that arrow, see what happens.
Okay. Okay.
Nope.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that gave us that. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for listening to me tonight. And thank you, Kelly, for putting me on the agenda. We had a brief meeting with Kelly and some other city officials regarding what we want to do with McKinney Woods' property. From my understanding, just from talking to people in the community, McKinney Woods is somewhat of a landmark around here. It seems to hold a lot of sentimental value to people. And the property is now for sale. And so we are... Having technical difficulties. There it is.
Yeah, you might just want to right-click.
There we go. Okay. I am the executive director of an organization called Faith Recovery. We are a faith-based, Christ-centered recovery program, currently located in Newport News, Virginia. We have been there since 1979. We are a 12-month program, and we are looking to relocate our program. And had a meeting with Mr. Hathaway about maybe if he knew of any properties that may be available, and he turned us on to this. And we went and looked at the property, and really are excited about the possibilities that that program could provide, not only for our program, but for the community as well. But just some brief statistics on addiction, just to kind of make you guys aware of the problem. Overdose deaths are obviously in the news a lot every day. And when they peaked in 2019 at 70,000, that was very alarming. But then they went up to over 81,000 in 2020. And in 2021, that number has now, for the year 2021 alone, has exceeded 100,000 deaths due to overdose, according to SAMSHA. And is now the leading cause of accidental deaths in the United States far as surpassing accidental shootings and even car and vehicle accidents. Overdose is the number one leading cause of accidental deaths. Statistics also show that it is not limited to a certain part of town. It affects all of us. One in three households is the statistic, according to SAMSHA, that are impacted by substance abuse. Either someone in the house, someone in the family, maybe a neighbor, but they're directly impacted by substance abuse, and their lives are touched by it. It's a problem that's everywhere, and I'm sure you guys are well aware. And just one last statistic, one in eight children, which is alarming, really. One in eight children live in a home with an addicted parent. So that means that child is being neglected at some level emotionally, maybe even physically, there may even be an abuse-type of situation. But certainly, they're not receiving the love and care that they need because their parent is struggling with a disease that they need to find some help to get their way out of. The economic impact of addiction as well is something that's very important. The National Institute of Drug Abuse estimates that drug abuse costs the United States economy $740 billion every year. And that's in lost production costs, healthcare costs, crime, and a big one is incarceration costs. The, currently, we, in the Newport News, City of Newport News alone, we serve really the Hampton Roads region. But in City of Newport News alone, we save them well over $100,000 a year in incarceration costs alone. And just taking a look at the Commonwealth of Virginia jail reports to the Commonwealth, to the General Assembly, the Henrico Regional Jail, which New Kent uses to send their prisoners to, has an inmate per diem of $91.63. So that's $33,000 a year to warehouse somebody in a jail. And I don't know what the deal is at New Kent House with Henrico, but I'm sure that there is a fair percentage of that that is at the sheriff's expense and the county's expense and the taxpayer's expense. So why Faith Recovery? Why would New Kent County consider having a program like New Kent County here? We have a proven history of success. Every county has a substance abuse problem. It really cannot be ignored. And we have been in this business for 42 years. And we have successfully served the community there. We've got great working relationships with the local courts in the area and probation officers, and work very closely with those who come into our program as an alternative to incarceration. We also have a lot of collaborative and other community relationships with local CSBs and churches and other programs for referral basis in case someone were to come in our program, and it's not really a good fit for them. Rather than just putting them on the street, we work really hard with other relationships that we have to get them placed somewhere else in a program that would be more suitable for them. Our program, and what I feel makes our program as successful as it is, is the fact that we're a long-term recovery program. This is not a 30-day program where people just come and then leave with a couple tools in their toolbox, as they say. It is a 12-month program. Residents that come into our program are committed to a full calendar year to actual change. So this isn't, let's just come talk about our feelings and why we use. This is, let's find out what's really going on inside of you, and let's discuss that, let's hash through that with some counseling. But we have both a professional counseling component and pastoral counseling. There's a spiritual component to our program. But also, there's a component to our program, really, where they also apply. You have to apply what you're learning in the classroom. It's one thing to know it in your head. It's another thing to be able to apply it to your daily life. So a big thing in our program is it does give people that season of life, a full calendar year, to begin to kind of work through their problems. How do I go to work and have a bad day and not go home and drink and use and relapse, and then my life spirals out of control? Because I let that one feeling get the best of me. So how can we really take someone and move them to a place of actual change, not relief? A lot of people want relief from their circumstances. They don't want to go to jail, they don't want to be in trouble with their wife. They want to keep their job, they really just want relief. But we're a program that is committed to actual change. And it gives them a full year. Character development isn't learned in a classroom. You can't sit in a class, and no matter how well the teacher is, no matter how good the counselor is, you can't learn character development in a classroom. It's called character development for a reason, it has to be developed over time. So the full year that they're in our program, they actually begin to develop their character. They, you know, they don't get it right at first, but as they begin to move on, their character begins to change, to begin to be more and more honest about what's going on with them. We catch them with cookies in the room or something that's against the rules or whatever. You know, they go from trying to hide it and not be a snitch to actually opening up and say, yes, I did that wrong. And so we can begin to work and talk about those things. But it's the development of the character, really, that I think really makes, that's our program apart from a lot of other programs in the community. And graduates, those that complete our program, those that actually finish and graduate from our program, they will complete with 12 consecutive months of sobriety. So if there's a relapse in the program, then there's a restart, and they're set back. So ultimately, what happens is by the time they graduate, whether it's 12 months or 16 months or whatever it is, they have 12 months of continued sobriety. That says a lot about the changes going on in their mind chemically and the character that they've been able to develop over time. By the end of the 12 months, they have found employment. They have built a support network outside of the program, which is going to be important for their long-term success. And they have a stable home plan, a place to go live. And we help mentor them through that process. Those are the requirements for graduation. It's not just come sitting around for 30 days, 60 days, or even a year, and not work on anything, and then you get to leave because you were here for a certain amount of time. You have to really check these boxes and get things done. We have what I call a holistic approach to recovery. Recovery is not just a psychological program, a problem. It's not just a mental health issue, it's a spiritual issue. And the big book of Alcoholics Anonymous, even, it doesn't really even mention it as being a mental health issue, it calls it a spiritual malady. So at our foundation, at our core, we address addiction from a spiritual approach. There is biblical classes, but it's not learning Bible Sunday School stories. It's about what does God say about bitterness and resentment, which is something that they work through in step four, to really begin to deal with what triggers them for relapse? And how does the Bible apply to that? How does your spiritual walk with God help you along the way? What's his part, what's your part? Because you just don't sit around and pray and God waves a magic wand, it makes it all better. You have to do your part as well. So there's biblical and recovery classes, you know, relapse prevention, all those types of things. We have professional group counseling. And there's a vocational component to our program. And that is really the season where we have some micro enterprises. We have a thrift store that will remain in Newport News. And we do local construction and just, and local moving, some things that help our residents pick up some job skills, but also establish a strong work ethic. And it helps them work out a lot of workplace relation-type skills, soft skills, as we call them. So you've been through phase one, you've done through the classes, you've done some things. And then now it's kind of the application phase, where you apply what's going on. In real life, you don't get to wake up, go to group, go to class, go to chapel, go to another group, and go to another class, you're going to go to work. And so they get up, they go to work. There's a personal study curriculum that they're required to do on top of that. And then they also participate in the professional group counseling in the afternoon. That continues on throughout the year. So they have the opportunity to kind of discuss what's going on with them and be able to kind of navigate through their struggles at that time. Our, one of the things that we were successful with doing in Newport News, and I've actually reached out to a couple of businesses here. One in particular that is very excited, actually, is we can help local businesses with some labor deficits. The employer I talked to was, he had a deficit of 10 employees and was struggling to get work done. And we had a discussion about guys that are in that later phase of the program, possibly coming to work for him, and to help him with his business, but also help them kind of get established with a job and get things moving forward. So it's kind of... So it's kind of, it's kind of making sure we touch on every aspect of life because if a person can't find a job when they come out of jail or out of a program, they're destined to relapse because they're going to be frustrated, they're going to think that everyone's, you know, that it's just not going to work out for them, that they've, they're too far gone, all these things that, that gets in their head and they struggle with. But if we can get somebody to deal with their issues, committed to change, begin to develop some character and then get them employed, then they really have a, 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 a great possibility of long-term success. And I mean, and these are, these are men and women in our program that come from, from all types of walks of life. I mean, they're, uh, they're a guy that recently graduated our high, that graduated our, um, our program who's actually stayed on to help us, uh, was in law school, uh, came from a very affluent family in Williamsburg and, uh, got hooked on Adderall in college and that turned into a heroin addiction and his life spiraled out of control and he, he ended up in our program after many other programs, short-term programs. And he found his way back and he's recently completed his, he had dropped out of law school, but he recently went back to William and Mary and just finished his degree in professional counseling and is working on his hours to be licensed professional counselor. So the, these are people from all walks of life, people with a lot of gifts, a lot of talents, a lot of abilities that can be assets in any community if we can just get them turned around. This thing is really tricky. Oh, oh, I see a movement. I'll just do this. All right, why McKinney Woods? Why, why are, are we looking at McKinney Woods? And, and the first and foremost reason is we have always, uh, since I, since I, I, I actually came through the program myself actually 20 years ago. And, um, and I came, I, I went on and was, was working in a business world and I came back to serve in 2008 under our founder and, and when he passed away in 2015, I took over. And so since that time, um, we actually historically in, in our program for 30-plus years, we were collaborating with a teen challenge in Raresburg, Pennsylvania, where we sent men up there for what we called second phase of the program, where they could get into a rural envi- uh, you know, a rural environment that's got more of a peaceful setting and really much more conducive, uh, to recovery than a facility in downtown Newport News. In 2017, they changed their model completely and no longer accepted any transfers into their program. They went to, um, they went to a detox and clinical programs. And so, um, so we had to kind of figure that out and 12 months in a facility located downtown Newport News, um, isn't necessarily very conducive to long-term success when it comes to recovery. So McKinney Woods gives us, uh, the opportunity to have a, it's a beautiful campus, if you're familiar with it, I mean, it really is a beautiful piece of property, um, and, uh, it would really provide that peaceful serene setting that is more conducive to recovery and mental and emotional health. It also gives us the ability to expand our reach of services where there, where there's need. I Googled and tried to find a program in New Kent County and there, if there's one, I'm not aware of it yet, but I could not find a, a recovery program anywhere in New Kent County. So it gives us the opportunity to kind of expand our reach and be able to, to, uh, help those who are struggling, families that are struggling, uh, here in the county and maybe James City County as well. The facilities there are already set up for lodging and dorm, dormitory style, uh, living, which is what we do when there's already enough beds there to accommodate the program. The property has plenty of recreational space, uh, that's therapeutic, with there, we can have recreational therapeutic activities, uh, to enhance our program. And also gives us the opportunity to expand our, our faith-based relationships, uh, in the community, uh, here in New Kent, uh, as a resource to churches. A lot of people, when they're struggling, they reach out to their local church for help and pastors don't really know what to do. If someone comes to them with an addiction, I'm a heroin addict, what do I do? And the pastor a lot of times is at a loss. And so we could be a resource to local churches here in the community, um, to, just to the community at large as well. We're not, we're not what I would call a traditional recovery program. We're very family and, and community oriented. We believe it takes a village and that begins with, with the nucleus of the family, but also beyond, you've got a recovery family, you've got a work family, you've got a community that, uh, that really you need to be involved in and that can support you and help bring you to where the place that God really created you intended you to be. He gave all of us gifts, he gave all of us abilities and when we get off track, sometimes we need some help to kind of not only get back on track, but to stay on track. So we like to, to, uh, you know, grow more relationships here in the county and be able to be an asset, uh, to them as well. And then our proposed use of the property really isn't much different than what the property was used for in the past. I understand it was, it was a camp for kids, but really we're basically for all intents and purposes be a camp for adults that have some, uh, some life-controlling problems that they need to work out. So there's not a huge property use change, uh, going to re, you know, kind of provide the same retreat-style environment for spiritual growth that the camp provided for kids over the years. What kind of impact will us coming to New Kent County, uh, will have on the county? And number one is, is the most important to me is, is the ability to help families here in the county that are impacted by addiction, uh, find really the, it's really a hopeless situation. If you haven't been exposed to it, you're very fortunate, but if you know anyone who's been exposed or has a family member that's struggling, it's really a hopeless situation for a mom to watch their child's life spiral out of control and there's nothing they can do to help. And they need to know that there's a place where they're, they, they, they just don't go to dry out, so to speak, but a place that they can go to and, and really provide actual change. Our program would benefit the county by saving thousands again in our, in incarceration costs. This is kind of a, a little bit of a side benefit, we're in the people business, but that is, that, that is a, a financial incentive for the county and, and certainly the sheriff in his budget. And it also, uh, reduces recidivism. It's rather, again, rather than house them in a jail and let them back out, you know, let's get these, let's get these lives turned around. And again, I think I touched on this earlier, our phase in two, phase two and three residents could benefit local businesses, um, with labor deficiencies. And then also drug prevention programs. We've been out in, 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 in schools in the community to kind of share our story, to kind of talk to kids about drugs and that's one of the things we like to do. If we can, if we can get to someone before they're addicted, that is certainly, uh, a win for us, but, um, our, our, our main program is kind of once they're there, but we also have a prevention, uh, component where we want to get out and really kind of reach people. And our occupancy of McKinney Woods has been sitting there for a few years now for sale and, uh, and, and the longer it sits there, it's not doing anything. So it's a beautiful piece of property. Our being able to move in there would maintain a beautiful piece of property, uh, that really I think is, um, it's just absolutely gorgeous. We love it and, uh, you know, it would help keep the scenic and natural beauty of, of the community here. So this is just kind of a map of the, uh, of the camp, really where the inset that comes out, that will be the main operating, uh, area of our camp, uh, of our program, um, where the, the lodges are, uh, are, are lodging, uh, for program residents and, and staff. We do have staff that's on-site 24 hours a day, so there's, um, you know, if there's any concern of who's watching these, these people at night, we have staff there 24 hours a day and they are under constant supervision. And so the lodging there, Laurel Hall, that you can kind of see, Jordan Lodge and some of the smaller cabins would provide lodging for our, our residents and our staff members. The main lodge there is, uh, got the full kitchen that would be kind of be used as, as the, the kitchen and dining hall. We would also have chapel services there. I've got some, a couple of quick pics I'll run through after this slide, um, to kind of give you a feel. And also would be used for administrative offices, our classrooms and our counseling offices, uh, downstairs. The, the, the camp amenities such as, as canoeing and natural trails will be used for therapeutic exercise and recreation, so we would make use of the whole camp, um, and are really excited about the, the possibility of doing so. And, and family, again, family and community, family and community, it's what's kind of it's all about. So that property gives us the opportunity to have some family events where families can come on the property, maybe stay a weekend, spend some time with their loved ones, begin the restoration process because addiction comes into a family and literally it tears it apart. And there's a lot of broken, there's a lot of broken trust, there's a lot of hurt, there's a lot of things that, that families don't understand. And if we can kind of begin to help bridge that gap and begin the healing process in the family before they exit the program, then they're, they're way ahead of the game because they've already understand that when I get home, my wife isn't going to give me the checkbook right away because I've, you know, I understand that my mom and dad, if they come letting me live back home, I'm 22 years old, when they come letting me live back home, that they're not going to trust me, I'm probably going to have a curfew and not get a house key right away. You know, all the, and so they, they understand the process, but also we can kind of help facilitate and bridge that through family events and even community events. Whatever the recovery community looks like here in New Kent, you know, we are certainly open to, uh, bringing them in, again, the whole concept of a village and getting, getting people involved. And even if the county wanted to have some sort of event, you know, we would be open to, I mean, it's a beautiful property, it really is. And so we would be open to something like that. So future possibilities down the road that, that we certainly want to discuss during the permit process is the possibility of new facilities. The facilities that are currently on the property are, are, are aging and, um, and we would obviously want to be able to have the opportunity to replace those, but then also, uh, there is plenty of room where we would like to maybe build a, a new facility that would be strictly for administrative offices and counseling offices and, and family services offices, um, just so we can open up some of the other older buildings, um, for lodging. And, and I, I printed a full sheet of this, it's in, in the back, if you haven't seen, it's a little easier to read. Problem should have said that before I hit the slide because I know that, that little tiny slide's hard to read, but, um, the family camp, campground that you kind of see when you come in down off the property, uh, it's right now not really, needs some work, but down the road, we would want to be able to open that up for family picnics, families coming in and, uh, you know, and, and being able to camp and spend some time. There is, I'm, I'm not real familiar with it, but I did see a sign that I guess there was a tree farm there on a property at one point. I'd like to look into that down the road, that may be a possibility for something else that we may want to do to help engage our residents in learning something new, but also, uh, help with our sustainability. It's part of our sustainability, being able to kind of farm the trees and sell them to local nurseries, et cetera. We've, we've, I've had some people approach me about aquaponics, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's, uh, it's, it's a fancy way of growing, uh, vegetables and they, it's really the, uh, the really like, it does a really great job, you know, with the, the greens are really green, it really is a wonderful process. But they, we've been a, and just some of our conversations, some things we could do with the property, that came up, the possibility of being able to grow our own vegetables, but maybe do that in, in a, rather than plow in a field, do that in kind of a greenhouse with the aquaponics or maybe aerponics or something like that. That's something we want to look at again down the road. Helps us with our sustainability. Again, it's therapeutic for those in our program and also, uh, the potential for us to sell to local restaurants and, uh, farmers markets would, would help us with our sustainability as a nonprofit program. And then, uh, one of the things that we are working on, um, that wouldn't change anything as far as the property use so much, but, uh, having a component of our program that is, that is not licensed as a medical facility, but there's different levels of licensure with the, of the, uh, BDBHS, which is Department of Behavioral Health, that, um, that we certainly are, are looking to pursue so that we can better serve our clients. But we're not looking to put a detox center up there or anything like that, but there is different levels of, of, um, licensure that we would, we would want to pursue. So just kind of some brief, just some brief pictures to kind of help you kind of see what we're looking at. That's, that's the main lodge, uh, and you've got this main area here that really is a, a beautiful room for a dining hall and we can have some chapel services and some small community events and of course the kitchen's already there. And so it, it, it needs, you know, some freshening up, it needs some work to do, we'll have to go in there. And we're going to, we're going to put some money into the property to, to, to fix it up, those buildings do need some work. And so we're going to put some money into it and make that property, um, kind of renew it. The Laurel Hall, which would be kind of our main, uh, lodging facility, you can see the layout here, all the dorms that are already set up, the beds are already there, again, needs to be freshened up. It's got this large hall air here that we can use for a rec hall so they have some things they can do in their downtime. And that's just kind of a, a picture of the outside of the building. I didn't know I could do that. Jordan Lodge, which is another small building there that you saw on the map, another lodging facility, would probably be one of the ones that we would use for our, those that stay on to do internships, that have graduated our program and interested in staying in and, and serving. And, uh, and then just there's other, other camp areas, you can just kind of see some of the, you know, it's, I mean, it's a beautiful property, it's a, it's, we, we can say what we want about addiction, but if you take somebody who's really struggling with a life controlling problem that is in your community anyway, and you can get them somewhere like this for a year where they can really kind of begin to work on their relationship with God, but also work on the things that's necessary, that God, God's word is very clear about with our character and things like that, and do that in an environment like this, I mean, it's, it, it, I, and I probably am a little biased, but it, it's a win-win. I, I think it's a win for us because we're able to help people, it's a win for the families, it's a win for the person struggling and it's a win for the community because you take someone that's been in and out of your jails, that's a tax burden and we get them and we turn them into a tax-paying citizen that's now employed and looking to, uh, improve their quality of life in the community. And then that, I mean, that's kind of hard to read, but I did just kind of put a picture of, of the site plan there, you can kind of see, um, you know, we're, we've got a meeting with environmental health tomorrow concerning, you know, the drain fields and all those types of things. So we are, we are looking at all those things and doing our due diligence, um, but I, I wanted to, and that's just an overview shot, um, from the New Kent County website really that I just pulled off. It's a 270-acre campus, it's beautiful, again, most of it's wooded, um, and so, um, I just think it's, it's a great opportunity for, for us as well as the county to really help some, really help more people and really provide an opportunity for, uh, for what really, you look at the COVID deaths and you look at the overdose, overdose deaths that have happened, more people in 2021 have died from overdose than COVID in 2021. And so it's a, I mean, it's a problem, it's a big problem and it's not talked about a lot because of the stigmas that are attached to it. A lot of people see it as, uh, they, people just need to get their act together, um, they made their choice, they need to find their way out of it, but the reality of it is that it's, it's a disease, it's a spiritual malady and somebody needs help to get out. And these are people that have lots of potential in the communities, uh, in, in ours and surrounding communities that, um, if we can get their lives turned around, I mean, I mean, I could, I could, I could line, I could fill this room with people who are in the community doing well, uh, that are own homes and have families that were once, couldn't stop smoking crack to save their lives and, and their lives are completely turned around. But I, any questions that you have? I'm certainly open to answer any questions about us. We do, uh, we are still, we're very close to a deal with the Presbyterian Church on the property and we do intend to put in a application for condition and use permit. But I wanted to, on Kelly's recommendation, come and just kind of share with you who we are, give you an opportunity to meet me and meet us and answer any questions you may have from the onset.
Thank you Reverend Hall. Any questions from the commissioners for Reverend Hall?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Sir.
Yes, sir.
My extended family is an example of-
My extended family is an example of some of the things you just discussed. So we've been touched by some of the topics you just discussed, and I appreciate what you do for those people who suffer from this. Can you speak to the staff size and the number of patients, the optimal scenario, what you would expect to see there?
Right, right now in our current facility, we have 13 staff members and we have just under 30 people in our program. We try to keep a ratio of around, really, if you get more than one, you know, and by staff, I mean, some of those staff members are graduates that are doing internships that kind of do, I hate to use the word babysitting, but they kind of make sure people are where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be there. And then they report to the men's home staff and the men's home director as to any infractions or whatever's going on. But we try to keep the span of control within five to seven. And we, our intention is a larger property, a larger facility, really to kind of, we're not going to come in with 40 off the bat, but, you know, but we would like to be able to house 40 people to be able to, you know, again, broaden our reach, which will, which, which will mean hiring more staff as we, as we move forward.
Right now, or most of your patients mainly coming out of the Newport News area?
Right now, we have, there's probably about 35% come from Newport News. We have them from Virginia Beach, we have them from Chesapeake, we have them from Williamsburg. We have one from North Carolina, we've got a couple from Colorado. You know, but, but again, these are people that are coming to a program, understanding the commitment of a full year to change. And so these aren't people looking for a quick fix, these are people that are, understand that. And our mix as far as walk-in, I recognize I have a problem in aspiring out of control versus those who have been arrested, which I believe God uses to get people's attention, is we're at about a 50-50 blend. And as far as those that are incarceration, we do not accept any, any violent offenders, they're all non-violent offenders with substance abuse programs. So they may not have been arrested for possession, they may have been arrested for grand larceny because they were trying to steal a chainsaw from Lowe's to sell it to, you know, support their habit. But it's all non-violent offenders.
Would you, would you continue to work with those localities? Are you looking to shift your, kind of your, I don't want to say your target area, but are you looking to focus more in this area of Richmond or just patients from Richmond?
Our intent is to still be available to the Hampton Roads region, but to be able to kind of broaden our scope up in this area. And so how that mix plays out will kind of depend on how it plays out, you know, based on our bed availability. And so, you know, but we would like to be able to reach, you know, New Kent County, Richmond, there's some programs in Richmond. But there's not really a whole lot around here, the closest one that I've been able to find is the Fix, and that's almost an hour away. And, and so but yeah, to be honest, we don't want, we don't want to abandon Hampton Roads, but there's several programs down there. And, but we want to be available to help anybody in the surrounding communities as well.
Any more questions from commissioners?
I have a couple, yes. First, thank you for your work.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And I also have family members who've been touched by the same issues, and as a matter of fact, have been to the Fix.
Okay, okay, great, it's a great program.
Yeah, and still successful, so that's good. My question, have you met with the building official yet? I guess, is there any change of use that the property is going to bring? Because you're, even though the use of the property generally, you have, obviously residential use, but with a type of residence, sometimes the build code will address a little differently, so I don't know if you've met with him yet or not.
I had a brief meeting with him, when I had the meeting with several, and, and I need to schedule a one-on-one meeting with him very soon, I've had a couple of brief conversations. It seems, just from initial conversations, that there's really not that much of a change of use in the buildings. Because we're, it's lodging or housing. But the recovery component could add something that might change a couple of things, so.
Right, and I guess from the program in Newport News, do you have a residential use group or is it an institutional use group?
We are actually, in Newport News, it's a, it's a religious, but like a group home, yeah.
And are you limited with the number of residents by your licensing through the state?
We're limited more by probably where we're at now, more by the capacity in the building.
Staff, resident ratios, and things like that.
Yeah, and once we get maybe more into the licensing with the DBHDS, their restrictions are a little more stringent than kind of what we have now. But again, 40 people really, you know, unless you have a gigantic staff, you know, 40 people is really kind of a spot where we kind of want to stick around. You know, 40, 50 at the most, you know, because the property, we don't want, you know, we don't want to go in there and have to start tearing down trees and building buildings because we want to help 300 people. I mean, it's, we like the way the property is set up. And so we want to keep it not, we want to grow, but keep it within, within reason.
And that was a nice question as far as expansion, so.
Right. So around 40, 50 people is what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Reverend Hall, I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Will this be a closed campus or an open campus? I.e. will it be gated or will it be just kind of appear as the campground it is today?
It will appear as the campground as it is today. We don't have any intention of building walls around it. We are a volunteer program. So if someone comes into our program, they can leave. We certainly do what we can to work with them not to. Now, if they, if this is a scenario where someone is on, let's say, in the, in the program as an alternative to incarceration, which I'm sure is a concern, we work very closely with local probation officers and police and sheriff departments to where they are immediately notified. And if we can actually, what we really try to do, can't, can't always do it because sometimes somebody will just leave, but when they start really, most of them are vocal about wanting to leave because they want to use the phone to call a family member to come pick them up. We'll get on the front side of that and make sure that we notify probation and give them the opportunity to pick them up. But it's, it is a volunteer program. I will say that of the, which is actually, in recovery, it's actually a pretty strong statistic, but a little over 60% of those that come into our program complete the program. And so when you're looking at a program that's a year long and you're looking at the structure and commitment it takes to do such a program, that's a pretty, pretty decent retention rate. But you will have those that will choose to leave. And that's just the reality of it, most of them, because of the way we work closely with the families, they'll, you know, especially if we're in a camp kind of a little bit in the middle of nowhere, no one wants to take off walking in the woods in the dark. So they'll probably want to call their families and, you know, somebody will come pick them up, so they're not just wandering the streets, so to speak.
Also, is, was, being not really optimistic but realistic, what do you think is a realistic timeline that, from today, that the first resident would be on site?
With, with the facilities, the way that they are now, if things, we've got an engineer helping us with the septic system, and we're meeting with Department of Health tomorrow, and if everything looks like that's going to be enough, adequate for what we're trying to do, and we can kind of, that's not an issue, then we're looking at end of June. About six months.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
If there's no more, any other questions, thank you, Mr. Reverend Hall, for your presentation.
Yes, sir, all right, thank you.
I think we have one more presentation tonight, it's near the winter solstice, and we've been delivered a half a ream of paper to digest for the holidays. And I see Mr. Hathaway in the audience, I think the time is for your presentation, sir.
No, I did not get a binder, but I have this thing memorized, but I'm, I'm good. I am good, but I do have a gift for you today because I know that that text is very tough to read. So I printed the spreadsheet out on November 17th.
I presume they have smaller print.
All right, good afternoon, good evening. We're, I'm here today to present my recommendation to you for our FY23 comprehensive improvement plan. Why am I here with the planning commission? It's because Section 15.2, 22-39 of the Code of Virginia states that a local planning commission may, and at the discretion of the local governing body, shall prepare and revise annually a capital improvement program based on the comprehensive plan of the locality for a period not to exceed the ensuing five years. Our capital program that's before you, the FY23-27 CIP includes 90 individual requests with a five-year estimated cost of $56,504,334. This evening, I will focus on the request for FY23 totaling $28,120,138, of which I am recommending funding for projects totaling $20,652,864. Of that $20 million number, $3,424,264 would be funded from our CIP cash reserves, $100,000 would be funded from proffers, $1,368,100 would be funded from federal and state grants, and the majority of the cost, $15,760,500 would be funded by debt. Which I'll go into in a little more detail, and that debt mainly is for three projects. The replacement of fire station number four, which is the Lenexa Fire Station. We are currently in a temporary facility, which has unfortunately become a bit of a permanent facility. We've been in there for quite some time. And that building needs a significant amount of work. And I just have issues with putting money into property that we don't own. The other problem, other project is a new animal shelter and the renovation of the west wing of the historic school, which I'll talk about in a little more detail. Where does our capital money come from? How do we fund capital projects? Basically, we fund capital projects with the surplus from the previous years. Our financial policy at the end of each fiscal year, and at the end of the audit, really, the remaining balance from that fiscal year is forwarded to the next fiscal year. And number one, first and foremost, it goes to covering our required operating reserve, which is 15% of our operating budget, we create a reserve account. And then anything over that goes to our capital fund, and that's how we fund our capital projects. Going to, a little bit about the document you have before you. The first 10 pages is a budget memo for me, which really is a more detailed explanation of the process and the funding for our capital improvement plan. And then we get into the spreadsheets, which I've passed out before you, which I'd like to go over briefly, focusing on the projects that I'm recommending for approval. So I will not touch on all the projects, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them. The first column are projects dealing with our airport. And there's two projects being proposed for funding, one is an obstruction removal design, which is basically engineering for, we have to maintain a certain clearance for our takeoff and landing approaches to our runway. So we do have to look at removing trees, which does cause land disturbance, so therefore we do need an engineer. And we need to determine what trees need to be removed as well, as well as negotiating easements. Even if we don't purchase the property, which in most cases we don't, we do ask for an easement, so not only can we get onto the property and trim the tree if needed this year, but we have the opportunity to go onto the property outgoing years as well. The good thing about airport projects, you'll see the first project, the removal design is $600,000. We're also asking for an engineering design to construct more hangars. We are out of hangar space on the airport, and I believe if we build additional hangars, we'll fill them. We actually offer the lowest rental fees around the region, and people like flying in and out of New Kent, mainly because it's not as much traffic as the Richmond area, and then you're limited to airspace. But the good thing with airport projects, the majority of the costs are paid for by the federal FAA and the Virginia Department of Aviation. In fact, the federal government will pay 90% of the costs. The state Department of Aviation will pay 8% of the costs, and the locality is pays 2% of the cost. On these particular projects, the actual spend from the county is $12,000 for the airport obstruction removal design and $30,000 for the T-hanger design. And with the T-hanger design, I believe with that project, the state is not contributing to that, that's all federal, but there are some opportunities to get state reimbursement after the project is complete. The next column or row of, group of items deals with administration projects, projects that I am recommending for approval. The first is the historic wing, historic school west wing renovation, which is the former high school and middle school facility next to us. We've renovated the east wings of that building, but the original portion of the building, which is historic and was constructed in 1930, has not yet been renovated. Included in this cost is once, well, let me get to the purpose of the renovation, which is for a community center and a recreation hall facility. There's a very nice stage in the building, which just sets itself up for community plays, receptions, things of that nature, big community meetings. There's also a portion of the building that we want to dedicate for a senior facility, a senior space with the kitchen and enough room for facilities. There's room for parks. There's room for Parks and Recreation Program space. We also plan to move the Parks and Rec office and the extension office to that building as well. And we want to use the back portion of the building as meeting space where any group can, which is a former library, where any group can reserve that for, for meetings as, as well. Part of this project and part of this number, six-point-nine million dollars, also involves the relocation of the school maintenance facility. If we're going to open this up for community events, parking is already a huge need in that area, but it's going to be even a greater need. If you've driven by at night when the sports teams, youth teams are practicing, it's full. We're planning to move that, it's gray or blue, I believe it's gray, metal building that fronts the road, which is the school maintenance office, and build a new metal, metal building for them behind the high school area. That will open up additional parking to accommodate the events we hope to have. The other program that I'm recommending for funding is a New Kent Gateway signage project. You're probably all familiar with the welcome to New Kent signs all around the county. I believe it, they're like burgundy and green with the acorn. Many of those signs are in huge need of repair and replacement. It's bruising up, but we feel that this is also an opportunity to show our new logo and new design. So we want to replace those signs with more, more modern signs showcasing our new county logo. The next group is actually from the building department. They're having some space issues, especially with the storage of their building plans that they review. They are required by law to retain those, those plans, and they're running out of space. What they're requesting is a rolling filing system where there's shelving that you can roll together, and it really creates more space in the existing areas that they have. The next item is fire and rescue. The next group, as you can see, they proposed for next year, two fire stations. I am recommending one, and I've kind of chose the one that I feel is the one of most need, and that is the replacement of fire station number four. They've also recommended the, or have requested the replacement of fire station two. I do believe we have a little more life on that facility, and I just don't think the need is as urgent as station four. I am also recommending approval of self-contained breathing apparatus, which we call the scuba gear, but that is the gear that the firefighters put on as they go into fires and burning buildings. The laws have recently changed, and all localities are required to have a certain standard of gear, which we currently do not have. I believe we have about two years to, to come up to the current standard. The total cost to replace our existing stock is six-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars. We are going to apply for a grant that does have a ten percent match. So the county's match would be sixty-one-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand dollars. We are looking at replacing one ambulance next fiscal year, as requested by the fire department. Support fire EMS apparatus, that is actually a new brush truck to replace the very old one that we have, and we got that used. And this will also replace the fire chief's vehicle, which he's had for eight years now. The next item is vehicle maintenance lifts. Right now, we're taking our fire vehicles to basically Curtis Contracting for repair service, because our schools don't have the proper lifts to work on them. We're proposing twenty-five-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-three, six, twenty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars to purchase the lifts that will be installed in our vehicle maintenance garage so that county staff can work on our county vehicles, which would save us money. Okay. The next group is from our general services department, and I have two projects that are being recommended there. One is the purchase of a new loader and backhoe. We have a very old piece of equipment right now, and just this year, this calendar year, I've paid a little over, the county, excuse me, has paid a little over thirty-thousand dollars on maintenance of that equipment. That's an important piece of equipment for us. Without it, we can't keep our brush collection going. Without it, we don't have the capacity in our storage bin. We use it to push brush so that we can continue to make room for brush. We also use it to compact the storage bins, mainly the, the metal containers at our six-eighteen refuge site. Also recommending thirteen-thousand dollars for the replacement of two sheds at our trash transfer sites at the six-thirty-four and Route six-thirty-four and six-forty-seven refuge sites. The next group is our IT department. They are requesting four-hundred thousand, which I am recommending that we do fund, and this is to upgrade our existing network system, computer network system in the county. Our Parks and Recreation Department, I am recommending a hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, six-hundred dollars to pave the walking trails at Pinefort Park, which receives a lot of traffic. Pinefort Park is our newer park that is open, and it is heavily used on, on a consistent basis, and so are the trails. And we've noticed, right now, it's a gravel trail walking system, and there's definitely some areas in that walking system that are washing out. In fact, there's three pretty bad areas that are washing out, and we can put more gravel and fix them up, but they're going to be continued, they're, they're going to continue to be a problem, mainly just because of the topography. I am recommending that we pave our trail system. The other item that I'm recommending for funding, Warnee Nature Trail Park, to upgrade the facilities there, mainly the playground equipment at Warnee, which is really, unfortunately, and I, I hope that we can change this soon, is really the only county playground equipment for the eastern area of, of the county. So we do want to upgrade that and make that more equal with the western area of the county that has several opportunities for playground equipment.
Yes. In that, was there anything brought up in the Parks and Recs about cameras?
Cameras? We are actually, for Pinefort Park, looking at installing cameras in this current fiscal year. You know, we've had some, some burglaries. Yes, yes. That's going to be a this fiscal year project. And I am also recommending thirty-eight thousand dollars to replace our messaging board at the Quentin Community Center. Currently, it's the old-style board where you add letters to it, physically add letters to it, which sometimes is kind of difficult to police. We've had some issues where people have put some not-so-nice signs on the board. Actually, it, well, I, I, it was my introduction to Let's Go Brandon. Let's say that. But, but we've had some other issues there, there too. What's being proposed is a electronic messaging board where we can better control the messaging and how long the messaging stays up there as, as well. The next item is school board items, and they've submitted requests totaling one-point-five million dollars in project. Their biggest two items, the biggest item is the replacement of five school buses at a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars apiece. Every year, they get more and more expensive, but they come with more and more equipment and accessories, and a lot of that is required by, by the state. I will say with our school buses, though, they're on a fifteen-year replacement plan, which is the guidance from the Virginia Department of Education. The second big item is the high school replace, the replacement of a portion of the high school roof. And this is one that I spent some time discussing with the schools on, because high school's not that old. But unfortunately, there is a section of the roof that's failing, and it's my understanding that the warranty is no longer applied to, to that portion of, of the roof as, as well. So that's a big-ticket item of four-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars. I thought metal roofs last thirty-plus years, but apparently that's not the case for, for this one. The Chromebooks. You'll see a request for a hundred thousand dollars. All of our middle school and high school students have Chromebooks that they can take home, and actually, our elementary school students have Chromebooks, they just don't take them home. The cost to supply those, annual cost to supply those Chromebooks to the students is three-hundred thousand dollars, mainly, and that's the maintenance fee associated with those, those computers. We have been funding this out of our capital budget, which is not the place to fund in ongoing maintenance costs. This should be funded out of our operating budget. But to limit the impact to our operating budget, each year, we've reduced the capital budget by a hundred thousand dollars. Last year, it was two-hundred thousand dollars. This year, it's one-hundred thousand dollars. Next year, it will be nothing, and all of it will be funded by the operating budget and not the capital budget. And then you have the other list of, of projects before you. The majority of them are HVAC projects, which seems to be an ongoing project, but our, our schools are, have some age on them, and most, and they have a lot of HVAC units involved in the schools too. And as those units reach their life cycles, the schools are trying to replace those. The Sheriff's Department. The first item I'm recommending is a new animal shelter. If you may be familiar with our current animal shelter, which is a nineteen-sixty, fifty-ish block building, that's in need of some work. And, and really, it's in need of expansion as, as well. There's limited opportunities for expanding that facility due to where it is located. That whole site at one time, probably before my time, was a landfill. And because of that, you really, there's very limited areas of where you can build on that property. Many of you may have known that when you drive into the property, there's a huge dip, and that, that's because there's really not a good base there, and the majority of what's underground is old field material from the landfill, landfill, and it shifts and moves. So we are recommending a new facility. We believe it's long overdue. We are looking at investigating locations for that. The sheriff and I are in conversation right now with Henrico County to see if we can put that on property adjacent to Henrico Jail East. It's actually owned by New Kent County, the property is, but it's leased to Henrico County, and it's currently not being used. The portion that we're looking at is not being used by Henrico County, so. We also are looking at a redesign of the dispatch office, the purchase of new furniture and equipment, and a new layout. As our Sheriff's Department grows, as call volumes grows, the needs for, need for dispatch is also, is also growing as well. We believe that we can avoid the need for a new facility if we could lay the dispatch area out in, in a different manner. And in our special ops vehicle, the camera that is in that vehicle has outlived its warranty, and we are requesting that that be replaced as well, and that cost is thirty-eight thousand dollars. The, the next set of items are vehicle replacements, and there are two recommendations. One is four-thousand dollars for a new vehicle for environmental, and they actually have some leftover money from this current fiscal year, which would roll into next fiscal year, and we would add four-thousand dollars to that so that they could replace one of their existing vehicles. There is also a request from the Sheriff's Department. Actually, the request is four-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand for seven vehicles. I am recommending the replacement of five vehicles for three-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand dollars. And, and I will say, this line item is of concern to me, because as you see in the out years, there's a request for pretty much half a million dollars each year. To me, that's not feasible to sustain. So I am working with the Sheriff's Office to find a more long-term solution. One of the issues that, that we're having is our Sheriff's Department, as many Sheriff's Department across the state, across the country, are moving to SUVs. So where we were used to paying thirty-six thousand dollars for the typical police cruiser, we're now paying seventy thousand for the SUV. So we've doubled our costs. So we'll continue to work on that, but right now, for next fiscal year, I am recommending a replacement of five vehicles as opposed to the seven that was requested. And the next list of items are computers. We have a computer policy that we replace computers every five years, and that's the longest that we can find a warranty for them. So that's when computers reach their five-year replacement, then I recommend approval for them. The next item is our copier machines. And these are the, actually purchased, we're moving away from leasing our copier machines, and we're moving towards purchasing all of our copier machines. We've ran the numbers, and it's actually cheaper for us to purchase the machines. We get the same service and maintenance program with the machines, so therefore, we're moving in, in that direction. So as our machines, as the current machines, as those leases expire, and they all have different dates, instead of renewing those leases, we're purchasing. All right. And we separate our public utilities capital improvements plan from our county capital improvements plan. Capital Improvements Plan, because public utilities are funded differently. Public utilities projects are funded through revenues and connection fees received from the Public Utilities Department. No taxpayer dollars goes into operating our public utility system, so therefore, we keep the capital improvement projects separate. The first two items are actually the installation of, I might be out of order, I'm sorry, I am out of order. The first item is an upgrade to our SCADA system. Our SCADA system is really the brains of our wastewater treatment plant. It's a software computer product that monitors the treatment plant, but it also monitors all the lines going into the treatment plant, too, which gives us advanced notice if there's something wrong. Usually, we can address it before we have to shut down the system or before any residents lose service. We are, and we've had this system for at least eight years, and we are looking at purchasing the upgrade and purchasing additional equipment to go along with the SCADA system. The next two items are for two of our pump stations, the Tallysville Pump Station, which is our largest pump station, and then there's a smaller pump station, which we call the Chickomine Pump Station, which is behind the, I believe, Eastbound rest stop off of Interstate 64. We're asking that grinder stations be installed at these pump stations, especially at the Tallysville one. I don't know if it's coming from the truck stop or where, but a lot of things are, we've had issues, it's a continual issue of things getting into our pump station and clogging the system, mainly rags are getting into the system. So what the grinder systems do is it grinds all of that up, could be, it grinds all of that up prior to getting into the pump station, which we believe will definitely increase the life of our pumps and our pump station as a whole. The Colony system, we are looking at upgrading, really replacing the waters, the water well and storage system at the Colony subdivision. That is, I want to say that is, I believe it is, the original system that we've band-aided and we've kept going, but this would be a replacement. Actually, there's two phases to this request, and the first phase, which is the $300,000, that is the addition of a water storage tank. Right now, there's no water storage at the Colony subdivision, which is an issue when it comes to fighting fires. It's simply a well system right now. Well, there is some storage associated with the well, but this would increase the water storage to give us the duration of water pressure that we need to fight fires. The next item is Maintenance Management System, which is pretty much a work order system. We have them in our general, we have one in our General Services Department, and we're requesting a very similar system for our Public Utilities Department. Also requesting a mulcher head for our skid loader. We have, and it's growing, a lot of easements and right-of-ways that we have to keep clear to maintain our utility lines that are around the county, and this mulching head will help us do that. Cultural Resource Survey. This is a requirement from the state for our water withdrawal project and water withdrawal permit that we currently have from the state to pull water from the Pamonkey River. And eventually, at some point, and it's probably five to 10 years down the road, we would be looking at building a water treatment facility to treat water, and this would be our source of water as opposed to our current source of water, which is groundwater. The state, they're becoming more and more stringent on issuing groundwater permits, really trying to push localities to look at alternative water sites. And we have looked at a number of alternative options as far as purchasing water from City of Richmond, purchasing water from Henrico. We feel that it's in our best interest to withdraw our own water. The next item, a Utilities Operations Center site planning. This is for architectural work, to look at building a new Public Utilities Administration Office on the existing property that they are currently on, which is at Point Dexter Road. The county's growing, and that is a theme that I'm having in many offices of the county. We are, we're growing as a staff and our facilities aren't, and we're in the same facilities that we've been in for some time. So this is the planning process to give them additional space. There's also a water backup supply well for the Mini Tree Glen Water System. Most of our water systems now throughout the county, we have backup wells. We do not with the Mini Tree system. And we've had some time where we've had to truck in water and distribute body wa, bottled water because that system has been down. So we are looking at a backup system there. Water system interconnection, Phase B, Phase 1B. This phase is to connect the Bottoms Bridge Quentin Water System to the Airport Road Quentin area, which just last year, we connected all of the, well, three years ago, four years ago, we connected the Quentin Airport Road area to the Farms of New Kent Water System to make that one water system. Then after that, we connected that one water system to the Kentland Brickshire area Water System, and now this will connect all of that to the Bottoms Bridge area. If we're going to move in the direction of a withdrawal project from the Pamonkey River, eventually, we're going to have to connect all of our water systems together because there's one water source point as opposed to the multiple groundwater wells throughout the county. So this is really a prelude to our water withdrawal project.
Rodney, is that what the 13 million is on, in fiscal year '25, '26?
Actually, no. I believe that is for, yes, it is, it is. It's to continue the other areas that we want to connect, eventually getting down to the Eltham area as well. So we really have one countywide looting system. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, and, because there's another withdrawal project, well, project related to the water withdrawal, where we're looking at purchasing some property for the water intake process. Microwave communications antenna to the Perm Landing Wastewater Treatment Plant. Broadband, I don't have to tell anybody here, broadband is an issue throughout the county, and we've been looking at ways to provide better broadband service to our wastewater treatment plant. Just a couple of years ago, we installed a microwave system at our Public Utilities Office, which has worked great, and basically, it's a wireless system that connects to this building and sends broadband wirelessly to that building, and it has worked great. So therefore, we're looking at duplicating that at our Perm Landing Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Rodney, on broadband.
Yes.
The state just put out grants, and our county was not on that list. I like, did that have something to do with, we did not have the type of representation we used to have in the General Assembly?
I'm not sure if that, that was the issue or not.
Because it was, very similar counties got the grants.
Well, over the past week, I've had numerous conversations with the state, because I was very disappointed that we were not selected. It doesn't stop us.
No, I didn't think.
Because we have the money to move forward regardless, and we have an RFP out on the street right now that's due next week for an internet service provider. But what I've been told by the state is they were looking for grants that provided a, what they called a universal option. So basically, they were funding projects that covered the entire locality. I was a little concerned that our internet service provider partner did not propose that in their grant. With the VADI grant, a locality can't apply by itself. You have to have an internet service provider to partner with to apply for this grant. We partnered with River Street Networks, and they provided a grant that was close to serving the entire county, but it was not a universal coverage, and we lost a lot of points on that. That's what I've gotten from the state is why we weren't funded, but while we're on that. Currently, for broadband, we have $13 million set aside for broadband right now, and actually, we haven't appropriated yet, but there's another $4.2 million that the county's received from ARPA, the federal funding, that we will appropriate to broadband as well, giving us a little over $17 million. We've done a design and some engineering for what it would cost to cover the entire county. We estimated that cost to be $25 million. We'll have that full amount by the end of this fiscal year to move forward, and we'll have that full amount from Colonial Downs. So it definitely has not stopped our progress. As I've mentioned, we have an RFP out for a provider that's due on the 30th, and we hope to be under construction the early part of next year. And our goal isn't fiber optic network to every single home in the county, so. Are there any questions? I know there's a few other projects, but, okay.
I have a question, and this way, I know fire and rescue is near and dear to Mr. Davis Cesar, but the fire stations, the one question I have is for the Quentin.
Yes.
Is that the station that's going to service the new elementary school? Does it have adequate, everything it needs in order to respond to?
Yes. There's proper equipment there, there's proper staffing there. It's just an old building, but there's new equipment in that old building and very well-trained staff in that new building. So I'm not worried about service delivery, it's just an old building, yeah.
And piggybacking on that, I was going to ask about Station 2 as well, but, so with that in mind, it's not showing up in a later CIP, hasn't been kicked down, can't have been kicked down yet where we see it. Is that beyond five years on replacing that station, or just?
I believe we'll be in a position to cash fund the construction of Fire Station 2, and that's actually a typo, and I'm glad you caught that, because we will put that in FY '24. I believe we'll be in a position to cash fund this fire station in FY '24. How will we do that? Colonial Downs. Right now, we've been setting aside all of our money that we're receiving for Colonial Downs towards broadband. We'll have everything we need by the end of this fiscal year, which opens up a huge opportunity for us to fund some needed capital projects and not have to borrow money for them as well.
Note of curiosity, do you have another site for Station 2, or is it, because you can't even build on that.
That's another reason that was kind of pushed back, because we don't have a site yet for Station 2. We would like something more west than the current building. We're talking to some property owners, but we've not secured a site yet for Station 2.
That's 5.3 miles from my house, so I'd like something a little further. And my insurance carrier would like that, too.
And, and, you know, now that we have Station 5 up and running, we can move west a little bit more and still have a good, good coverage.
Any other questions for Mr. Hathaway? Thank you very much for your presentation, sir.
Thank you. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. We will be scheduling a public hearing at your January meeting so that you can consider this request formally to make a recommendation to the board. I didn't go over it, and I don't need to, they're pretty self-explanatory, but also in your booklet, starting on page 19, are proposed fee changes, which will also be part of the public hearing in January. What we do every year is we look at the areas around us, the localities around us, what they're charging. We also look at the amount of time and resources that are involved with processing permits and fees, and that's how we determine if our fees are appropriate or need to be changed. You'll see the most amount of changes are from our Environmental Office, which we found, we're at par with the region as far as residential permits, but we're really behind as far as the commercial permits. It's a really good deal here in New Kent for commercial, because we're, we charge about half of what some of our surrounding neighbors charge, so we are looking to increase that, and really to make that consistent with the time and resources that go into processing those permits. But that starts on page 19, and if you have any questions, please give me a call. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on, and our next item on the agenda is any unfinished business. I will say that the vice chair has none. Is there anything from the commissioners or from staff? Moving on, next item is public hearings. There's listed none, so we'll close that item. And on to the topic of new business. Any new business from the commissioners or from staff? Mr. Hathaway, I'm going to open this up a little bit. It's not really new business, but I did see where the RFP for the consultant for the planning, excuse me, comprehensive planning was let back in November.
Yes.
And I believe it's, the responses are due.
January 6.
6.
Yes.
Have you had any early indications of, of?
Yes. Yes, I've gotten calls and questions. I am waiting until, there is a deadline date where firms can submit questions.
I believe it's this week.
It's this week, and this Thursday, I believe. And what I'll be doing early next week is taking all of those questions and advertising an addendum, listing all of those questions in my responses, so all the firms will have access to that. But yes, I have received questions from firms.
Chairmen's report. I have none, other than the discussion of the first several meetings of next year for the Planning Commission. Right now, we have scheduled the meeting in January, and that's, right now, we know that we have an item to vote on, this for the, for the budget. Kelly, do you have any idea of what may be coming forth?
Yeah, the first, the first two meetings of the year are always on the first, the third Tuesday. On top of the CIP public hearing, Sherry also will be presenting two AFD withdrawals. I have not officially received the application from Reverend Hall for their CUP, so today would have been their deadline if they wanted to go to public hearing. And I'm also waiting on the Solor folks that came to talk to you last month, I believe. I haven't gotten anything official from them yet either, so, right now, it's just going to be those. to be those three public hearings. Yeah, and if you want to keep the same schedule like we have, it'll be the the third Tuesday for January and February, and then the third Monday for the rest of the year.
Any objections to the calendar for next year from the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Plan RBA report, Mr. Moyer.
Yes, a couple of things went on in the this meeting. The discussion was the lease of the property that Plan RBA has ends the end of 2022. So they had, the executive committee have put together three locations they're looking at in the Richmond area. Not quite sure if it's going to be in Richmond proper or not, but that was one of the locations. Also, you know, they're trying to get that so they can have ample time to move out. The one discussion was on the number of votes counties have. Our county has two votes, we have three votes. Two are supervisors and one mine, because I'm on it. But there is always a discussion of what if an alternate comes and the commissioner can't be there? Who can vote? Well, an al, a non-elected official cannot vote for an elected official. So we would have to designate an alternate for that to be voted for. But the big, the big counties, like Henrico, who have five people on, they can have one of their supervisors come and vote for all of them, can put five votes in. It was a discussion about an hour long that, of course, to small jurisdictions was meaningless, and they're going to do pretty much what they want. They have the ability to have two, two or three alternates vote differently, different things for commissioners that aren't there. But I digress. And that's about it. Their budget is in good shape, and they have a lot of stuff going on for that. So that's it for me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Moyer. Commissioners reports, this next item in our agenda. Is it, are there any commissioners that would like to report on anything? I'll bring up one topic. With January being the next month is our month for election of new offices or our chair people or vice chair people on this commission. I would highly suggest that if you have somebody in mind, you converse with them, talk to them, make sure they're comfortable with the idea, and then have that recommendation for us at the next Planning Commission meeting. Those four offices are chair positions, are chair for the Planning Commission, vice chair, vice chair for the public hearings, and chair for the public hearings.
And there'll be a new person doing Plan RBA next year.
Oh, thank you for that. So you're not volunteering?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close that portion of the agenda. And moving on, we've acknowledged that the next meeting will be on January 18th, 2022, at 6:30 today, oh, 6:30 that evening, here in the boardroom for our next regularly-held Planning Commission meeting. If there is nothing else from any of the commissioners, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, teacher.
Motion by Mr. Moyer to adjourn. So be it. Thank you very much tonight for everything, folks.
Reverend Hall left some of his cards for you guys to use.